This conference will now be recorded.
Evening, everyone. The time being 4:45. I'd like to call this meeting of September 7th, 2023, to order. Please stand for the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we have the minutes of 8:17. Does everyone have a chance to look at them? Because I have not. You have not? Can we push these minutes to next week? Next time we meet? Thank you. Okay, I make a motion that we accept a $344 donation from Nukah for the Tilton Police Department's National Night Out.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Are those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. So the deadline, the collective bargaining agreement proposals from the law firms was, the deadline for proposals was September 6th. Seven solicited, five responded. I think we all have those here in our... We have Donahue Tucker and Chiandella, Drummond Woodson, Jackson Lewis, Sewell, Leslie Kidder, Saywood, and Longman, and Upton Hatfield. So if everybody would like to please take these home with you, look them over, and then on September 21st, we'll choose one going forward. We need to choose one at our September 21st meeting.
Excuse me, Pat?
Yep.
The, actually, the letter which was the way that... It's a letter that's been done in the past says in the letter that the board would interview those who are interested. So if you don't want to interview them, I can just call them and let them know. But if you did, I thought you do a half an hour each for the five.
Do you want to interview them? If you don't know these? Okay. Okay, interview them. So the 21st is our next meeting, so maybe put that thought on hold if we might need another special meeting for that because there are other things coming up that also are going to take a long period of time as well. But now let's just do that. Awful lot going on September 21st. All right. We also need to finalize, remember, not everybody was here the time when we asked the selectmen whether who would be part of the negotiating team.
You.
And I know it's me.
That's Scott was the other.
Well, he wasn't here. We voted him in.
In case you didn't know.
Are you willing to...
School Formula Committee, you know. Scott's not around. I would be...
Okay, to accept that one?
Yeah, I would, that would...
Okay, great.
I'd be pleased to accept that.
All right, good. All right.
Anything, any other committees you guys put me on? When I wasn't here?
Best is yet to come. Okay, next on the list is land use coordinator, Leanne Morningham, with her quarterly report. Is that in our packets or do you have it?
I have.
Okay.
Thank you. So this is end of August.
Just before you, before you start, I just want to mention to everyone, try to speak into your microphone. The last meeting were... When you, when you back away from your microphone, it doesn't always pick it up. So just be mindful that your speaker's on and that you're speaking, speaking into the microphone.
All right. Okay, so this is my quarterly report as of the end of August. I use the same format that I've been using. So if anyone has any additional information after I'm done that they're looking for, I'm happy to add that detail. These are the items that I think will be of some interest to the board. First of all, right up top, the office, just in general, obviously, has been very busy. Summer is always a busy time for the building department. Our revenues are up significantly. They're actually three times last year's revenues. So we're at $110,000 in building permit revenues. Where last year, we were only in the high 30s. So that's quite a bit, even though the permits were not up as significantly in the number of permits. The permits that we are issuing are for large projects. So that takes a significant time to manage as well because many more inspections on these larger projects and, and maintenance and oversight. So that's just generally the, the activity on the building side. Planning Board, we're fortunate that Planning Board is now full, which is, I think, the first time since I've been here that we've had a full board, which is really nice. We still obviously have some vacancies for alternates. So anyone interested, hopefully, will come forward as an alternate. Cases are down in the Planning Board, but we actually have a few applications coming in now for the end of the year. So that should pick up by the end of the year. We have, you can see, I just continually list the year's projects. So if anyone wants to know what projects are coming through and their status, it's listed there, as well as all the change of use applications we've received and their status. The zoning board is also a full board. So land use is, is a full complement. We actually also have, as you know, an applicant who will be looking to fill the alternate. I guess he is coming to see the board next meeting. And this is someone that I knew. He's actually the owner of the domestic dog training property up at Moonlight. That's Steve. And he's got some background in working in the community. So it'd be nice to have somebody new there and an alternate's a good spot for him to start to learn. The cases are listed there as well. The zoning board cases are up quite a bit. We only had, I think we had 15 cases all last year and we already are up to 14. Actually, we're at 16 for next month. So zoning board has been very busy. Permits are next, as you see, I already mentioned in the overview summary, we're up $110,000 in permits. And we have a couple larger permits still due to come this year. So that number is actually going to go up. Tilton School has a couple more projects. And Tilton School projects are usually pretty expensive because they're still doing the residence hall. So that's gonna, that's gonna jump again by the end of the year. So that's great, especially being a self-funding department. It's good to see those numbers up. Assessing, again, these are quarterly reports now. So the numbers are a little higher. Forty-five properties transferred over the three months. I have a list there of this. These are the enforcement complaints that have been ongoing. Once, a few are still open. And we have a few of them that closed recently over the past quarter. Also, a new effort was temporary signs. We've been trying to attack the temporary signs, mostly flags. We've also done some ground signs. So you can see, I kept a list of all those that I have gone to the sites and requested they remove those or remove them and obtain, if they wanted, a temporary sign permit for 90 days. And all of them, I believe, have complied that are on this list. And I'll start again with a new group as time is available. This is just an information. We had a right-to-know request from Walgreens. Downtown businesses, we have one new business downtown called Tay Tay Crystals. Just to kind of keep up on what's happening downtown. And last section or second-to-last section is just ongoing projects that the board might be interested in and whether they're still going forward. And just listed U-Haul, The Anchorage, Haven Grove, BJ's. Colbia is the Shell project that is pending. They have contacted me there. Will be coming in for their plan review the next month. Smithy's Cinema is under construction. We have a new hair salon going in at the Smithy's Plaza. Frontera is the old Chili's. They'll be doing renovations. And we have two projects, one, the Knowles Hall East is complete. And as the mansion project is also complete. Also, I guess, just for information, Poor Decisions has closed. It's no longer there anymore. They went out of business. They're looking to put in a church there. So that's the word from the owner. That he came in and asked if that was an allowed use. And it is an allowed use in that district. That doesn't mean, that's, that was the inquiry to that, that space. We also have, the barn is going to be used as a... They're going to make signs and like they sell on Etsy. Gentleman lives in town is going to take that. They're going to renovate that building. And housing standard, so they did start back up doing housing standard inspections. In August, they did 22 and 24 Grange Road. That was completed. And there was a schedule to do a couple every month. But September now, there'll be no inspections. I think Fire is the one that Chuck reported to me that was unavailable in September. So I believe inspections will resume in October. As far as our housing standard meeting, I guess we were waiting for some members to become available. Most members were either unavailable or we couldn't get a time that we all agreed upon in August. So we will try again in September. Although Sean, I believe, at Fire, if he's unavailable for housing inspections, it might be difficult to get him to a meeting in September. But I'll try again for the next month. And then the last section is a new ad, and that's zoning amendments. Because I've started taking notes of what we might want to discuss at the Planning Board for zoning amendments. And these are just discussion items. One is road frontage is a note on the, on the dimensional values sheet that makes a note three that I think is unclear that I would like them to address. Auto repairs versus other similar repairs by district came up at a zoning board meeting as unclear. Airbnbs, if they want to look at writing an ordinance for Airbnb's, we don't have one. Escavation, the special permit, which is now in the ordinance, doesn't specify criteria. The board might want to identify criteria for that special permit. And the solar ordinance, which was copied from another town and submitted, I believe, by petition, list districts that we don't even have. So that needs to be corrected. So those are the ones I have. I usually keep a note pad by my desk. And as things come up, I try and make a note of them so that we can discuss them at the planning board meeting. And that will be coming up soon because we need to start writing those in the fall. So I... That's my report.
Does anyone have any, thank you, Leanne. Anyone have any questions for Leanne at this time on her report?
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
So on the second page, it says complaints. I made you aware of 22 Hill Road.
Twenty, oh, is a new one you're making? I'm sorry, do I have 22 Hill Road on here?
No.
Oh, okay, so, okay.
I sent you an email on August 9th.
Oh, right, okay, 22 Hill Road, okay.
Finally replied. So I was made aware that 22 Hill Road, just a single-family residence, decided to become a business. And they're renting property out as an Airbnb to transients. So I could not find on the tax card that it had changed. It still said single-family residence. So I emailed Leanne and asked her if there had been a site plan, maybe the tax card wasn't updated for it to become a rental property. So my question is, why isn't that here on complaints?
Yeah, I didn't add, I'm sorry.
Why didn't you respond? I mean, why didn't you?
I did respond to your email. I didn't have a formal written complaint. That's probably not in my file as a written, as a complaint form.
You didn't respond to my email. My question is, a private, single-family dwelling unit decided to become a business.
Right, well, I was unaware of that until you sent the email.
Right, but it's not here. So I take it you didn't take any action of letting them know, closing them down, until they had a site plan to become a business?
Well, again, it's an Airbnb. Is, we call it, we're considering all Airbnb's. So I guess we need to have a discussion about how we're going to address Airbnb's because there's probably quite a few. If you go on the website, you can find a lot of Airbnb's in Tilton.
Does it really matter what they call themselves?
I don't know.
They're a single-family resident.
Right, that are renting out.
And it's now become a business. Regardless of what call it Airbnb, motel, hotel, inn, it's a single-family residence that decided they're going to, all of a sudden, be a business.
All right, well, we...
Site plan regulations say that government review and approval of disposal of the site plans for the development or change or expansion of use of tracks or non-residential uses. So site plan tells you that if you're going to decide to be a business, get a site plan. So if I decided, all of a sudden, to turn my house into an Airbnb, that would be okay? So everybody in town could take their single-family residence and become an Airbnb? And we're not going to act on that?
I didn't say that. I didn't say, I didn't say we weren't going to act on it. I can, I can take action. I can send a letter saying we got a complaint that they're running a business. And I'll have Chuck go down and verify that a business is being run out of there. And we'll move forward with that. And they'll have to file a plan if that's the business, so.
Well, I'm wondering why that didn't take place a month ago?
Didn't, I, I put it onto Airbnb and we don't have any requirement for Airbnb.
Well, we may want to put some language in there and description of that, but it's still a single-family residence that decided to become a business, regardless of what we call it.
Right. So other rental properties that are running transient rentals along the lake, we should, we'll do the same. We'll send letters to all those businesses, all those cottages.
Treat everybody equitable.
Right, okay.
If they don't have site plans, if they've, all of a sudden, decided to take a single-family residence and turn it into a business.
What do you mean by transient along the lake? Explain to me that.
Well, any single-family home that's renting out for more than, I think the definition I have in front of me is 180 days, etc., is considered transient. It's in the definition of transient. If, I thought you had the ordinance in front of you. But, and I didn't bring the ordinance book. But I believe transient is considered more than 180 days.
It doesn't matter if it's 180 days. It's a single-family home that's decided to turn their home into a business. That's what it is. Whether that's a home business...
Well, it's short-term rentals. And I guess it's, you can argue whether that's a commercial use, like an apartment that's being rented. Is that a business? It's a...
Apartment, I would hope, would already have a site plan to exist or be grandfathered.
Well, apartments don't have site plans because they're residential. So a two-family home would not have a site plan.
So I could build an apartment building without a site plan?
If it's over four units, you need a site plan. If it's under four, you do not need a site plan.
It's still a single-family residence that decided to become a business. If I take my home and I rent it out to people to live there...
If she's renting part of her house.
And it's not as an apartment, that's a business.
If it's established as an apartment, and it's always been established as an apartment, then it's, then it's...
I think the difference is too, because you can have a single-family home. I can rent out my home. Not everyone is owner-occupied in their house. So does that mean a house that's not owner-occupied is not a business? It's just renting out their house. Renting out the house. You could rent out the other half of your house if you wanted to.
As a single-family residence.
Right, as a single-family, it's still a single...
It's a short-term rental.
Right, so the question, right, so that, that becomes the question. The short-term rental piece is what we're questioning on the use is short-term. And that's why with short-term rental is considered usually an Airbnb or transient lodging.
Well, that's right, Scott.
Yeah, so I think when we, when, when you look at it and when you look at literally across the country right now, the difficulty that municipalities are having is that people are taking their single-family homes, etc., and using them as Airbnb's. Guilford just put, I think Guilford just put in ordinances, ordinances for Airbnb's too. So I'm not, you know, disagreeing with you that with, but I think it's going to take a bigger piece where we look at how are we, as a municipality, going to handle Airbnb's? And I'm sure, I'm not to speak for you, but I'm sure Meredith has had to go through it. So with those rental properties, it's, I mean, because technically, technically, I know that there are some municipalities over Maine where it is listed as a single-family home. The folks reside there, but there's like five or six weeks on the shoreline where the coastline, where they're Airbnb-ing it to make money, to cover bills. And it's still, it still goes along with what their ordinances are. So the bigger picture now, I think, is we're going to have to take a harder look at how we handle Airbnb's as a town and what they are and what kind of restrictions and/or ordinances and/or zoning, etc., that we need to put in on, on those businesses out there. Because, you know, it does become something different, you know, fundamentally sort of different for what we have, so.
Well, we may want to add a definition for it.
Yeah.
Planning Board can do that, the site plan regulations and subdivision for local town meeting. But after all, we don't have, I don't believe, inns. It says motel and hotel within our site plans. I mean, our zoning, it doesn't say inn, I-N-N. So does that mean if I want to open an inn, I don't need to site plan because it's not in our regulations? I mean, do you see my point?
No, no.
And I think it's not, it's not just a simple thing. I think you have to look at what they're advertising and it's, it's in there.
Yeah.
And you will definitely see that they're running a business.
So, well, let's, let's...
Like I said, you can't treat them all the same. You're going to have to look at them and see what are they doing? How are they advertising it?
Well, if we call a spade a spade, if it's posted on Airbnb or VRBO, etc., that's, they're, they're running a, they're using their property. Yeah, so, I mean, now, now it comes down to, in my opinion, honestly, as, as a municipality, what direction are we going to go in terms of regulating Airbnb's and how we handle Airbnb's? And it would probably be worth a look at what some of the other towns around. I know Guilford just put theirs in, etc., so.
Lacony has a really good work.
Lacony has a good one, too.
Yeah, they have a really good ordinance, but they, they, obviously, Planning Board submits it, goes to town meeting, they, you know, they vote on that. But they have a really good package relative to short-term rentals that I think we'll probably be looking at from Meredith because we're having all kinds of issues.
We have a terrible zoning board ordinance, I'm sorry. We still have impact fees in there.
We still have what?
Impact fees.
I, I, I know. I know.
All right, so we were going to go from here. Do you want to have Leanne just pursue the...
I think Leanne could take care of that.
Okay.
I have one other thing, and it's just something I discovered today. So, and I couldn't find it in the 1992 town meeting.
Oh, boy.
Because, well, because it's a zoning ordinance, it's a ballot question, not a town meeting. But if you read this, they've copied from RSA 6743, which they quote in there.
Are you reading from our ordinance now? I just don't, we were referencing.
So it says, "For expansion of use of tracks of non-residential uses." In 674, it says "for." It, it, it makes a difference.
Can we read it one more time?
Well, I'm going to give you these because I don't need them.
Is this, is this something you think we should look at for a zoning amendment? Is that what you...
I think it's just somewhere along the line. It was transcribed, wrong.
Wrong.
I think it... I think it just needs to be corrected because you can see, they folded it off, except for this. Four, so they, yeah, they copied it. But like I said, if you read it, you'll see it makes a difference.
Good find.
That doesn't need town, that doesn't need town meeting, the regs. This is in the regs.
Yeah, you can see they copied that RSA, which we often do. They just, somebody just made a mistake, which is easy. All right.
Do we have any other questions or concerns with...
I have one other question. And I saw the questions that were forwarded from John to you, Leanne. But I have one question on former Mike's auto. Has a cease and desist been issued for that property?
You know, ever, ever, you mean, historically?
No, so my understanding is, and I tried to find the information, but I guess the real way to do it is open the card file. My understanding is, is there a non-compliance?
Right.
It's been a non-compliance for a while.
Well, since it, so I became aware that, as you know, back when it came last time, of the non-compliance and brought to the Planning Board because they were looking for a change of use. And the Planning Board's been working with them. And actually, the Planning Board made a decision at the last meeting to allow them certain parking spaces and to continue to remain there under those conditions that they made a motion at the last meeting in August. I have a copy of that decision if you want to see that. So the Planning Board is working with them and directed the tenants to contact DES regarding some of the other issues that were beyond really their expertise or what they would be expected to know about, and which they did. And we've been in contact with DES. And they're coming back to the Planning Board the 12th, next Tuesday.
Okay, so is there a, exists, is there a current site plan for that property?
There is. I have the information. I don't know if Pat, what Pat wants to, how, tries to handle this at this point. I can continue to answer your questions. But yeah, there is a 2004 site plan, and that's what the, right, which is the problem. So what happened is when they first came to me for a change of use, I looked through the file to see what we had, if anything, and I found that 2004 plan. And then when I looked at the plan and I looked at the aerial of the property, obviously, the two didn't match. And so I brought it to the Planning Board to seek whether the Planning Board would require them to file a new site plan with an engineer or they're going to allow this just as a change of use because they review change of uses. And that's how this ball started rolling. And then here we are. We, so we've cleaned up the cars mostly. They've addressed some of the issues with the wetlands in the back. We've contacted DES. And they're trying not to put these gentlemen out of business, I believe. The Planning Board is trying to help them to get the site in compliance.
And they're cooperating with your office?
They are. They're doing what, right, they're doing what they can as mechanics to get the property, which is owned by a third party. So they can do, they can clean up the cars. They've done that. They've moved cars. They've submitted a plan marked up that the Planning Board reviewed and agreed and gave them only 32 spaces. But the DES issue is still outstanding.
But those are the tenants. Is, is the property owner cooperating?
Well, the property owner has given his written authorization for the tenants to represent him, which is what is required.
Power of attorney?
No, written authorization. So if you are looking...
How do you know it came from the property owner? And I'm just curious about that question.
We have an authorization form that's been signed and notarized that he gave them.
Oh, it is authorized, okay.
Is that, is that what you're asking? I'm sorry. Not power of attorney, but, yeah. So, yeah, so like, you know, an engineer has to get that signed to represent an owner.
So it sounds like it's moving along and we don't have to issue a cease and desist.
We don't have to if that's what the Planning Board wants to do or we feel we want, we can...
Planning Board doesn't have that authority. They're not enforcement.
Would be the board.
The Board of Selectmen is. The Board of Selectman is.
Well, and again, I guess the Board of Selectmen can issue that, but right now, everyone's just trying to help them to come into compliance. There was some oil cans behind the building, that there was some concern with no proof that it might be leaking. Those have all been removed, did an inspection. I have a copy of my inspection report. They've removed those.
It sounds like it's.
They're trying. They're trying as much as they can to get the property into compliance. It's been probably like that a very long time, as far as the back. I don't know how long that detention pond in the back has been nonexistent, but I'm sure it's not just in a few months. That's been like that a long time.
So, Leanne has diligently answered each and every one with documentation, and has copies, my understanding is, has copies for all of us. But, but these are John's questions, and John, John isn't here.
Well, I don't, I don't think we need to.
So, it, she does have those for all of us. So, you want to wait till next meeting, or do you want your copy, or?
I mean, I can leave them, and.
It's up to you.
By the next meeting, the planning board will have met again on it, so there might be more information. But, I mean, I'm more than happy to leave. I mean, I have it all prepared.
It's up to, it's up to however the board wants to handle this.
I'd like to see the copy, but I don't think we have to discuss it right now.
Right, so if you want to take the copy home with you, that's fine. And then we'll discuss it at the next meeting when John is here, because he may just ask, have more questions or whatever. We don't know. So, that's, that sound like a plan?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Leave Jeannie, John, and Joe's, that'd be great. That way, that gives you time to absorb it, too. All right.
I want to look at this, too. This was the. At the last meeting.
On the.
Would you keep us updated on the former Mike's Auto property and the Airbnb issue of the 23 Hill Road?
All right, does anybody else have any other questions or concerns from Leanne? Any more?
I'm going to leave a copy of the report as well for John and Joe.
Okay, that'd be great. Yes, absolutely, thank you. And then, we can just let them know that they're at Jeannie's office, so they, they can get them.
Yep.
We have other reports, too, that you can get them. Thank you so much for coming in, Leanne, I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, I did, I forgot to mention earlier, so it's really obvious that Selectman, Justman, and Selectman Scanlon are not with us tonight, they're ill. Okay, and we did have the DPW director on the list, and he is also out. So, we now have the McFaulan-Johnson proposal, engineering study. Were you asking me to hold off?
No.
You, sorry. Sorry.
Okay.
Can we go back to DPW for a minute?
Sure.
So, the bids that he submitted for the impound pad.
Oh, okay, sure.
I, we communicated via email, and he did send out specs. Kevin did. And I'm looking for this one. So, one of these entities spec'd what he asked for, which is a 30 by 46-inch slab reinforced with wire and number four rebar mat. So, one of these has all the information on it. This one doesn't appear to have any information on it, except the price. This one doesn't talk about the thickness of the pad, nor does it show any wire mesh. Now, in all fairness, I don't know if they included it in their price or not. I just didn't want Kevin to have to wait two more weeks to do this pad. This is as Kevin's design. So, I don't know which one it is.
Go with everyone you recommend. I mean, if it's designed by Kevin, I would go with.
Well, all three of these are very good companies. Yep, this one I have, which is this one. Let's, who is this one? This one is missing the wire mesh. Oh, yes, thank you. This one I didn't have. Let's look at this one. Okay, so you have two now. This one didn't have the wire. So, now there, we have two. That are almost the same. This one is using 4,000 PSI concrete, which is stronger than the typical 3,500-pound use for slabs. But on center, I'm looking for this one. Three foot on center mat. They both have wire mesh. Well, the difference is, you're one that's using a sealer, I mean, a 4,000 PSI, and one that's not.
But one's two foot on center, and one's three.
Pardon?
You said one was two foot on center, and one was three foot on center.
Right, but since they're both, it's not real critical, because they're both putting wire mesh with the rebar, and those are both.
Yeah.
Got it.
Reinforcement.
I'm going to go with your recommendation. I have no clue about concrete, and you are the concrete queen.
Yeah, 20 years ago.
Yes, she is. She's been at it for 40 years.
More knowledge than I have of concrete.
Well, I would do, I think that I would choose the one that's using the 4,000 PSI, and I put it on top.
All right.
It just, it's a, but like I said, all three companies are very excellent companies, been in business for a long time.
Hey.
They probably all do a very good job, but.
Oh, okay, I see it. Well, I'll make a motion to award Bayside Concrete, the Lease Department, impound lot, slab, you would, for $14,300. Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Others in favor?
Aye.
All right, moving on, we need to accept the McFaulan-Johnson proposal for the engineering study for Caleb Hill. As a reminder, Brian was here on August 31st and presented his, their proposal. And there's only one signature. Read, did you, everybody read it?
Yes.
Still asleep twice reading it, but I read it.
I've read it several times. And then I copied up the state's ordinance, or not ordinance there, right here. Design environmental analysis procedure for municipally managed state highway aid program projects. Patent B. My concern is that a lot of the investigating that they're going to do is by looking at existing maps, they're not actually going to go out there and identify wetlands. Will be delineated in course of New Hampshire DES and Army Corps standards, this is wetlands. Locate flagging usage.
It seemed that way to me, but.
I think I hung up on proposed work on culverts that carry streams under Caleb will be permitted through the New Hampshire DES routine roadway, roadway maintenance notification process in the next phase of the project. Therefore, stream assessments will not be completed. So, we know the culverts are really old. We know that streams change, and I couldn't find, I did find language later on that talked about culverts in the next phase, but I couldn't find anything where they were going to assess, do the stream assessments. So, that has me a little concerned, because we know those change, faster, slower. Then they're going to identify aquifer as well, have protection areas, drinking water source protection on existing New Hampshire DES and town information. So, those are very old properties out there. They don't have any records of wells, I'm sure. I'm sure DES doesn't either. And the same, it's, so all of these things on page two, they're, they're relying on, they're not actually going out and looking. That bothers me. And it says on page three, it is assumed that the existing roadway width is sufficient. Roadway widening will not be required.
Where do you see that, Catherine?
Two-thirds of the way down, just above task F.
Oh, okay. I missed that one. Soon the roadway.
Yeah, so here it is on page five. Hydrologic and hydraulic analysis for existing culverts and closed drainage systems will be completed in the next phase of the project. For the purpose of estimating construction costs, it will be assumed that the existing culverts and closed drainage systems will be replaced as part of the project, and will need to be increased in size by 25%. Well, I hate that they're going to assume. You know, Everdams up in that area, you know, there's a big one up on the.
Yep.
Ranger.
Right.
So.
There's more than one.
Those, there's a lot of them up there. They grow, they shrink, they, you know. How much water are some of those holding back? You know, we got some pretty small culverts up there. So, those things just kind of concern me, and we talked a little bit about it when he was here, but it didn't leave with warm fuzzies.
What happens if this gets put off to the 21st?
Oh, it just means, in, in the proposal, they said it'd be eight months that they would get this done. It just means you push it off another two weeks. But I, I'm, would, and Tim can speak to this as well, if you want to chime in, I would be surprised. There, the proposal that they've given you is based on the money that the state said that they would pay for an engineering study, $100,000. I think if you want more done, they would probably be glad to do more, but then the town would pay for that additional. So, we are limited by what the state has said that we could spend on an engineering study. And that number was based on the first, the meetings we had with all the engineering firms a year and a half, two years ago, when they gave us an idea of what it would cost for an engineering study.
Who pays for phase two?
Well, after this engineering study is done, and if it comes back, as you know, if it comes back under the remainder of what was left over, then the town would be committed to moving forward with the project. If it's over, then you can make a decision one way or the other, whether you're going to move forward with it. So, I, I believe that phase two would be part of moving forward. And that means that 1.25 or whatever's left over is what, if you remember, the state is giving an outright, it's unprecedented what they're doing, which is this, yeah, the total, yeah.
But if they're not doing like the hydraulic systems and the culverts, and looking at the closed culverts that are there now, and looking at the drainage, and looking at.
And I think they would be happy to do that if the town wanted to pay out-of-pocket more for whatever that additional would be. They're doing it within the constraints of what they have for funds. They, and we talked to them about this, how much could you do? And they said, well, within that $100,000, this is what we can do. So, again, if the town wants more borings or more study on certain things, I'm sure they'd be happy to do it. We would just end up paying for it out of, you know, pocket. Right, right, here.
Yeah, the alternative would be, if you had other requirements you wanted them to add or do more of, then, then in order to meet that, that amount of money, they would probably have to pare back something else that's already in there.
You know, it really isn't about them doing more. It's about them doing it correctly. I mean, it is assumed, the proposed work on the, I mean, assumed, really? They're not, they're not actually going out there and looking at stuff, at wetlands, at the conditions of the road. They're going to rely on other people's information. You know, and I get that, it takes less labor, less time, less cost. But on the other hand, this is a very old road that was never designed and built properly as a highway for cars. It just evolved, you know, it was, it was, it was an ox cart path, and it eventually got paved. So, the state wants us to take this over as ours to maintain, a road that they've never really maintained, ever. And we're going to do a kind of a slipshod. I mean, I guess we don't have a choice.
Well, we do have a choice, because if you get to a point where you, if it comes within under, you're committed to it.
And, and you do have a choice. You could just say, no, we don't want the engineering study, we don't want to do this, and.
If it comes in over, then we have choices.
Right.
We can guide them a little bit more, because it's going to come in over. We don't have a choice to commit, to guide them, because you have a road that was built improperly to begin with, and you don't have the option of. And you don't have the option of guiding the engineer properly to figure out how that's going to be engaged in a proper design with drainage and with all of that. Me, that's what I was hoping that we were going to get with, with the engineer study within the realm of that $100,000. That design, if they did it properly, would come way over that 3-point-whatever million dollars. If they did it properly, that road was never built properly, ever. Go back in time in history, if you look at, you know, the historical like Catherine says, an oxen path. And then they just paved it. Thus, we had boulders coming up. Why we had boulders coming up? Because there was nothing coming, you know, nothing properly. And there was no properly based. There was nothing taken out of there. There was no drainage. So if we get into this and we say, yes, we're committed to this, and whatever we say to that is if it comes in under that number, we are committed to go forward with this project. That's what's scary, to me, anyway, to me. So we do have a choice in that respect.
If I may also say that, you know, one of the things that you have to keep in mind that we discovered during the process is that that a lot of what they consider to be a suitable roadbed is determined by state standards. And therefore, even if we said we want a full, you know, box four-foot reconstruction of the road, they're going to say, well, it's not necessary. That, you know, that doesn't need to be done. And also, there's a review committee, an engineering review committee at the DOT that would be looking at whatever comes from this engineering study and looking at the costs and and what they think is appropriate, commenting on that and sending it back to the town. So I think the real the real danger that I have seen in this is that what is the standard and how much control do we have, you know, ultimately? But...
I agree with what you're saying, but how did that work out for the state with 140 during the flood? They thought it was a standard base. It wasn't. That could happen to us. Okay, Boyd, what do we want to do with this? Keep in mind, John and Joe have not weighed in.
Fortunately, I'm coming in kind of at the middle at the beginning of this.
So you're kind of coming in pretty early on.
Can we at least express our concerns to this engineer? And I think I did when he was here, but he didn't seem to respond to it. We know what happens to that road. I said to him, there's water issues that you go out there and look right now, you're not going to see what happens, especially in the winter. So his results aren't going to be correct if they don't...
The flooding, the ice, the winter. Those are the concerns.
Where they're not at...
The water coming off a pest house.
Yeah, they're not actually looking at the conditions of the, the existing conditions. They're relying on information provided from maps and et cetera. That's very concerning. Like repeating myself.
Well, they originally, when they, a year and a half ago, or whenever we were receiving engineering bids, in their original materials, they had pictures of the road. They were very familiar with the road back originally, 21, I think it was. They had some pictures during the wintertime of the roadbed itself in different areas, citing some of the concerns they had at the time. So and in fact, after that first set of meetings in 21, I think the group that reviewed all these felt that they were the most familiar with that road, having driven it many times and seeing it in different conditions. So that's not to say that that's a substitute for, you know, seeing it at its worst, because I've driven it every day during the winter and can tell you where you can't drive when the ice is built up or, you know, steer clear of that side because you're going to go down an embankment and the line of sight issues and other things. But but in terms of the $100,000 of money available, that's what, you know, that's what they had to deal with and that's what they came up with.
I think my, I think my largest concern speaks a little bit to what Tim had expressed, is that, to me, and maybe I'm very simplistic about this, but technically, I consider us the customer. And if we have a way that we would like it built ultimately, that that's what should be considered in this situation. So, and I, and I mean, I no, I just, if I understand that they have to look at the New Hampshire DOT, or they look at the New Hampshire DOT and how it is, but that's, that may not be the standards that Kevin considers appropriate.
So we had that conversation when we met with them and we, our direction to them was that we wanted this road built so that it would last for 20 years. That's what we wanted. We, you know, the everything. And the response back was, and that was always what our concern was, the response back, well, the DOT may not consider that necessary. So that is the concern that we've always had, is that, is that they're going to come back and it's going to be under because the review, yeah, because the review team's going to go back and forth with not only the engineering company, but will be involved in those conversations too. And, you know, the state could say, well, this is what we consider good enough. And it may not be to what the town wants. And if it's under that number, we are committed.
So who gets to be on that review team?
Well, it's the DOT. And it's whoever you want. I mean, Kevin certainly will be. The team that's been working on this for the last two or three years has been Leanne, myself, Kevin, and Tim. It could be whoever you want it to be. So I, you know, you could, I suppose you could choose tonight just to say, no, we're not going to do this. We're just not going to, I mean, if you remember, one of the reasons we thought, I think, to have the engineering study would at least give the information to DOT DOT and us, what it really, what that cost would look like, what, what would it take to fix that road? But...
But then you're locked in.
Yep. That's my fear.
Yeah, if, yeah.
So it says in here. What page is this? Page two. Understanding of the basic scope of services. Upon completion of the engineering study, the town will determine if they want to initiate final design or decline to proceed with the project. If we say yes to this as it stands, we still have an opportunity to say no. That's not what it says here.
But that, 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 what you're looking at there is not the agreement with the state. The agreement with the state is what would, what would control the activity.
That's what it says.
That's the agreement with the state. There's another document.
It was unnecessary to have that in there. I actually brought that up in the review of that, but it didn't, I don't think it did.
Well, I think we should probably put this on hold till next meeting and then...
If I may make one other comment, which is, I think it's important to keep in mind that I discovered in this process that the engineering firms are much more likely, we are, we are a transient customer, if you will. They're not going to be doing 12 roads with us. They are working with the state. So if you think in terms of mechanics, if, if they're our mechanic and we're telling them we want to replace our transmission, and they know when they go to the state, the state's going to say, well, gee, you know, that, oh, we could, we could do a transmission flush, but that's all we're going to do. They're not going to, they're not going to fight for our transmission replacement when they're really having to work with the state on other projects in other towns. So really, their alliance, I think, is more and their professional, their professional relationships are more engineering-wise aligned with the state and not so much with the town. So I think we're and this is purely my opinion, but, but I think that is a dynamic that I kind of got a feeling for in one of the meetings. And, you know, so that's why I had some concerns about it.
And the, and the other issue is that the engineering firm who does the study will not be the same firm that does the actual construction work. They, they don't allow that.
So the engineering firm that does the study doesn't oversee the construction project? How interesting. I mean, they do have to have, it does say in here. I like their title. What do they call it? A listening?
Yes, they do.
Where did you see that?
Listening session.
A listening session. So at first I thought, what? We have to sit and listen to them, but actually, they're going to sit and listen to us.
Well, it's also the residents of Caleb Hill Road, and I can think of a few who will be quite colorful in terms of their description of Caleb Hill Road, so.
I mean, there's a person that knows this road probably better than anybody, and that's Kevin. He's the one that has to maintain it. Well, the problems he has in early winter and late spring kind of only leaves a few summer months that he doesn't, but probably knows the road better than all of them. I don't know. I just...
It's a catch-22 in some ways. It's just it's hard because we know that we want to get it so that it's better. But I don't, I don't want to, I'm going to say, I don't want to have the potential of buying a product that's not going to that, that's not going to be prudent for the municipality that wouldn't be, you know, last for 20 years when we're taking, when we would be taking over. Another, what is it, 1.2 miles of road that are, that 1.9 miles of road that are, as we know, challenging with its terrain. So, and not just what's underneath. It's just challenging in terms of runoff and drainage and all of that stuff. It's really, it's, I think Tim's analogy is, is good. Like, if I'm going to buy a car, I would want it to be running in good shape before I put the money down for it.
It's too bad that's hanging over our head that we have to
I know.
You know, accept it. I like the language and, and the engineer's contract better. Can't we just say that overrules the state?
Not when they're in their cahoots with the state. Come on.
That's the problem. That's always been the problem. Well, I don't know. I mean, it's don't have really a choice, do we? Even if we wait two weeks.
I'd like to know how much it's going to cost us for the project because there's been a lot of people and they're not going to tell us.
You're not going to know that until they do the engineering study.
Right, I know that. This is what I'm trying to determine. I'm saying, I would like to know how much that would be. But, I mean, it's really a gamble here.
Right. And again, the concern that we have had all along is that if there, if the state has certain standards and guidelines that the engineering company has to follow, and they, in that discussion, that they could very well create an engineering study, that the cost is under that amount, and then you will be committed. That's always been our concern.
We know that that's going to happen. We know that this engineering study is going to result in the...
Not necessarily if we get the right people on the review committee.
At the end of the day, it's the state that's...
Well, now you've just pushed whatever hope I had in my head. Whatever hope I had. I said, okay, now, we have one person that lives on Caleb Hill. Come on. Now the person that maintains Caleb Hill. That's two.
Two here.
No, no, I was thinking about on the review committee.
Oh, on the review committee.
Like, okay.
The Valley Road isn't ours. That was Cluster Stated Road Project.
That was before me. Thank you. I've not gone through one of these. But Caleb Hill is a nightmare.
Same now, but this, I mean...
Remember, the bus is going the opposite direction. Boulders out of the road.
This is what the state does.
They don't want to have to pay for it. Yeah, absolutely.
And they're not going to fix it properly. It doesn't seem like we do.
I don't think we have a choice. So do we wait for John and Joe, or do you want to make a decision now? That's the, that's the question right now.
What will change in two weeks?
Their input? That's it. Go ahead, make a motion. You.
I think in the contract, he did put the date off to the 22nd of the 22nd of, says this offer will be open for acceptance until September 22nd unless changed by the engineer in writing. So you could wait until the 21st. That's your next meeting is 21st.
Oh, you must have a newer document than mine because this offer will open for acceptance until September 1st.
Yeah.
That's what mine says.
Right. It got updated again. Yours should say that, Pat, right? Do you have the original? It would be on the second page. Just above this, not just above the signature line, but it's like the second paragraph in the bottom.
Yes, September 22nd, 2023.
On page two?
Well, on my, on the original here, it was updated.
And ours in the, there's one on the back, in the back of your folder.
Date of July 28th.
Oh, look in your folder. Look in your folder folder. Your updated selectments folder.
I got that out of my folder last week.
I know you have a new updated one.
Oh, I have a new updated one now.
Because you're special.
Oh, what's it under?
McFaulin. See, there's a tab that would should say on the...
Unless you took it out.
Unless you took it out.
I did when they took this out. That's our other, it's redundant. I mean, they're either going to accept it or they're not, whether it's the first or the 21st.
Yeah, it should say McFaulin here.
If you want, I can always ask Brian to come back in. If you want, I can always ask Brian to come back in if you want to talk to him again.
You have an hour. That would be great, but we don't. Do a walkthrough on the whole of Caleb, point out all the places. Okay. We're going to wait till next week on the next meeting, September 21st. All right. And then we have a do or die situation. Okay. Next. It shall be selectments reports. And Scott, you're up. Thanks, Kathy.
Yeah, I, I, I don't have anything this week. I'm all set, so I will cede my time to Leckman Dawson.
Hey, Kathy.
Done it much. The end talked to you about the housing standard thing, so I was going to do a health officer thing. We don't have to. So we will be doing an inspection in October, the end of October when all three of those can be at the same place at the same time. But in the meantime, I've been looking at the noise ordinance. Of course, ours is a combination of disorderly actions ordinance, which includes the noise ordinance. Yes. And I've looked at, looked at other communities. So in my neck of the woods, sides of highway, a lot of the noise is gunfire. Takes place down in the village area, which I'm surprised that they can shoot in that area because houses are so close, but I've, the police have gone down and checked and it seems to be okay. But nevertheless, they shoot late at night. The other night, it didn't wake me up, but I was awake. It was shooting out in the back my field in the woods. Had to be a very high powered rifle because it was very loud. It was 10 o'clock at night. So, you know, and then the fireworks that take place all summer long. I just wanted to take a look at this and see how that would affect, and it really, guns and a lot of these. So I've got Wyndham's and who's this? This is Guilford's. And I looked at a lot of them. But those shooting guns are not held to the noise ordinance, which I find interesting. The times when you have to be quiet are different all over the place. And I thought we should take another look at it. I haven't put anything together to share with you, but I just wanted you to know what I was doing. Ours, you can make noise in Tilton earlier than any other community I've looked at.
Go forth and create.
So I suggest that, you know.
Especially guns.
Noise, yeah. Well, and it's not just guns. I mean, there's lawn moors and where I am, I hear everybody down in the village. They don't wake me up, but I'm, and I'm up early at five o'clock in the morning. I hear people mowing their lawn on a Sunday morning and I'm like, wow. If I was their neighbor, I'd be upset. On a Sunday morning, you know, let's get a sleeping day.
We just had a, we're having a house next door to us renovated. And they were there at 6:30 in the morning pounding, tearing things down and things like that.
It did. So I think, you know.
6:30, it's not, that, if you look at that, that's not even allowed.
Well, I have a two and a half year old that lives at the house. And if I was closer, if I was down in that village and woke him up on a Sunday morning at five o'clock, I'd be a little upset. Because I'd make him crappy all day. But anyway, I just think, you know, we should all take a look at it and I'll try to put something together.
Be great.
Sounds good.
That it?
Yes, thank you.
Wow. Okay. Um, I was approached, um, by two residents in the town of Tilton that asked if we could take a look at some point before the new year to increase the amount of the veterans credit. Um, there are several towns in the south of us that have increased it. I think it's 500 for the town of Tilton and that they've increased it to 750. Um, and also they've included the senior, uh, credit as well. So if we could um, look into that, that would be great. Maybe if we need to put it into a, um, question on the ballot, that'd be great. The other thing is, um, Taste of Trails fundraiser is October 12th at 5:00 PM, the Franklin Oaks Lodge. They would like permission to hang two banners up this year, one over by the timetable mable along the, the fence like they always do and where the true green went through along where they're now putting the granite, um, paper, granite curbing, I'm sorry. It would up be, if we give them permission tonight, it would be up from the time we say yes until October 13th.
Put it up for almost a little over a month?
Well, just shy of a little over a month, yep.
They maintain it? Sometimes it gets looking a little shabby.
Yep. We'll ask them to maintain it.
As long as they maintain it, I don't have an objection.
Agreed.
So that's a yes. Okay. Is there anything, um, to come before us in a public meeting online, folks? Anyone? That being said, we are now going to go into non-public. Time being 6:02, I make a motion to move into non-public per R S A 91A colon 3 to the dismissal, promotion or compensation of any public employee, other disciplining of such employee or the investigation of any charges against him or her unless the employee affected, one, has the right to a public meeting and two, request that the meeting be open, in which case the request shall be granted.
Ruggles, second.
Motion has been made and seconded. A roll call vote?
Ruggles, yes.
Dawson, yes.
Constantino, yes.
This conference will now be recorded.
All right. Welcome back. All right. Uh, make a motion to seal the minutes of September 7th, 2023, because the disclosure would adversely affect the reputation of a person other than a member of the board permanently.
Ruggles, second.
A motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Town administrator's report.
You should all have a copy of my report in your packet. Some action items. You are already dealt with the impound lot quotes earlier in the evening, so we don't need to go over that. Tilton Island Park erosion bids. So I did follow up with Department of Environmental Services, Water Division, trying to find a list of pre-qualified hydrologists. They said they don't have a pre-qualified list. I did have one selectman suggest we contact H L Turner and Dubois King because they're familiar with the town. I, uh, we randomly got a call from H E B Engineers. Apparently they're watching the selectmen's meetings and they were aware of the potential project, and so they were interested in bidding. And then Headwaters Hydrology, which I had mentioned to you earlier and sent you an email on originally had been recommended by Rennie Pelletier, um, a couple of years ago is also interested. So my question to the board is, because right now we've got two recommended or suggested by a board member. We've got one independently reached out and one that I had reached out to. So we have four. Would the board like me to post this in the paper and H M A, uh, put it on a website to solicit more firms? Or would you like me just to go forward with the four that we have?
Board, what would you like?
Let's go forward with the four, but it's interesting because they may not have a list of pre-qualified hydrologists, but they do have a list of hydrologists.
So, so the email that I got back said he had checked with the wetlands specialists regarding stream crossings. Are not aware of a list maintaining lists of pre-qualified contractors is normally only done through an RFQ. We also performed a review of the New Hampshire Office of Professional License Insurance Certifications and did not identify. So, uh, it sounds like if they.
Yeah.
If there's an RFQ, they've got a list, but they don't.
But I would just, you know, we could go with the four and, you know, see how it comes out.
I'd go ahead with the four. I think that the, we as a board and obviously the public has expressed their desire to start, really starting to move on protecting that island. And I think that this, this sort of will, will expedite that if we go with the four that we have right now.
I agree.
Okay. Next item is the follow-up on the New Hampshire Public Works mutual aid membership. I had given everybody a copy last week. I, uh, did put a hard copy in Selectman Dawson's, Dawson's, um, mailbox for review. Just as a reminder, they are offering communities free two-year membership. Kevin would like to join. So I'm back to the board asking, um, do you want to go ahead and?
I've read it. I don't have any objections.
At the end of two years, what's the cost of it? Do, I didn't really see that. Do we know?
I don't think you're committed to that.
Okay.
I don't have any instructions to it.
No, I'm, I'm good with it.
Okay, so I will give this, uh, it, it only has one signature line.
Motion then to let that sign.
I'll make a motion that we, um, I'll make a motion that the chair of the board be the signing member for the New Hampshire Public Works Mutual Aid Membership.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll abstain. Motion passes.
Hey, McFarland Johnson, we're holding off until the 21st. And next item is the town has been authorized. I received, um, an email from the attorney. Uh, the court authorized the town to clean up Nine Mechanic Street, I E, or E G, remove the vehicles and the trash. Uh, process would involve the vehicles being towed and after a 20-day time period auctioned off by the towing company. Does the board want to proceed with this?
Do we get to bill the property owner?
Those, yes. And any expenses we incur, yes.
And then if he, it doesn't get paid?
When the sale of the property happens, all those expenses come back.
Okay. Can I interrupt?
Yes, let's go.
I'll abstain on that one. I don't bone on nine mechanic.
So, uh,
Two yeses, so you're all set.
Okay. All right, next.
Historically, I haven't.
Next item, the recycle center project, Red Vest Day. This is a day that Lowe's volunteers will be on hand, help paint the space. I don't know if you've been over to the transfer station to see the progress, but it looks pretty good. It's scheduled for Monday, September 18th, from 8:30 to 2:30 at the transfer station. The kickoff is going to be at 8:30. Uh, I know the chair can't be there till 9:30. So my question is, is, uh, with kickoff at 8:30, is there a selectman who'd like to speak? They want somebody from the elected official to speak and Casey Hayman of the Lowe's will also be there and he will say a few words.
I'm sorry, I'm going to miss that. The vice chair going to be there or no? Did he say yes?
Yes, yes, he's going to be there.
It's up to you folks.
Yes, he will be there.
I can't be there.
We have four selectmen who'll be there. Eight thirty. No, three at eight thirty.
Three at eight thirty. So either one. Doesn't matter.
Okay. And then the other thing I wanted to talk to you about is we also should be thinking about the ribbon cutting when it is completed. And I had originally had it scheduled for September 21st, but I think that's going to be a bad day. There's so much going on. That's, that's also the night that the Gasset hearing is here with, uh, Executive Counselor Kenny. So.
It is?
Yes. It's going to be a, it's going to be a busy day. That's also the day you're going to talk to all the attorneys. So.
Are we pulling the cots out for that one?
Is it possible, what time is the Gasset?
Seven.
How long is the Gasset?
Two hours.
Till nine?
I mean, you don't have to attend it if you don't want to, but.
No, I just, five o'clock comes awfully early. Is, uh, coming in, uh, early that instead of 4:45 make a difference?
Of jobs?
So I think he gets out at three. Well.
It's out at three.
Three thirty.
Three. He's home by three thirty.
You know, the, the other, the other, one of the things you could do to streamline it is, um, everybody read the proposals by the attorneys and we give them only 15 minutes each and not a half an hour. I can tell you, I can tell you who, by looking at them, who's low and who's the lowest and who's the highest. And that's, I'm sure that's something everybody will look at. Who's got the experience and who doesn't have the experience in terms of the town of Tilton? So.
Really an attorney that's going to speak for less than 15 minutes?
We're going to tell them 15 minutes.
I, I think that, I think that would make one selectman very happy, less time with attorneys.
Yeah. But I mean, you know, you get, if, if you've done, you know, you've looked at the proposals, it, it basically, they really shouldn't have to speak. They should be here for you to ask some questions. So it's really the board, 15 minutes per attorney asking questions.
I think that's fair.
I mean, the alternative is you could, you know, between now and then, well, I can't do that, never mind. All right. So, um, so we will look at a different date for the ribbon cutting for the, um, recycle center. Might not be until the October meeting. All right. I sent the board out an email. Casella Waste has bought Prenard County. Belander called. Apparently he is going to continue working for Casella Waste. He wanted to have a conversation with the board, come in with, um, the other individual just to answer any questions the board might have.
Because. Now it's a monopoly.
Yeah.
Very sad day for Tilton.
So do you want to have that meeting or not?
I mean, there's really only one question. They're going to honor our current contract?
I think they have to.
They have to legally.
Even though it's been bought by somebody else and the agreement was with?
It's a, it's, it goes binding even with, even with the purchase and the purchase by another company.
And is there any other questions we would have?
I can, I can confirm that with Tony just to make sure. And if there are no other questions, I can just. I can, I can confirm that with Tony, just to make sure, and if there are no other questions, I can just I think he was concerned that, because there were some issues before with the, the Casella, that he wanted to let you know that he was, he was still with that company and would be, you know, making sure that relationship between the town is...
There's a lot of concerns with that relationship.
Yeah, that's gonna be a hard one to mend.
Yep.
So would the board like me then just to ask Tony that question, and if he says, no, there's a problem, then we bring him in?
That sounds good.
Other than that, you don't need to talk to them?
Yep.
Okay. I had forwarded the board a letter from Mason Alarms regarding the structural condition of the waterway culvert. It, it didn't get discussed at the last meeting, so I just wanted to circle back to the board and see what you would like to do, if you want, I've already talked to Kevin about it, I've looked at the pictures, or we've looked at the pictures. We have not gone down there, I didn't know how the board wanted it handled, so I haven't done anything.
I, I went down, I went down there and looked at it, but my concern is that who actually owns the waterway?
I don't know exactly where this is.
It's in, right next to the Sitco, in between
It's Tito.
The, the old, old water company. You know, the little cement waterway that goes into the main river?
Are you talking from Academy and?
Yeah.
What I call Academy extension, that little, that little...
So are they talking about, so the condition of it, as it goes under Route 3, or where it's open?
Where it's open.
Open, but part of it is a sinkhole, oh, where's my phone? I got it. Oh, you got him printed. Part of it's a sinkhole in the driveway part.
Yeah, I actually parked in there last week, and was, before this came out, and I was a little bit worried about it.
Thank you. Get my harp back up off the floor.
So who actually owns that, Catherine? It's not, I don't, isn't that the state?
No, they'd argue it wasn't, this is ancient, this has come up before.
But it goes into the water, it goes into the river, under the road, into the river, and the state owns the culvert that goes into the river.
So the part that goes under Route 3?
Yeah.
Right? Is the state's.
Right.
Where it's daylight, the town doesn't own anything around it. Where it goes under our roads, we own that culvert, but then again, so it's a brook.
Right.
So...
It goes in a few places.
Some of it has you know, a sluice way, if you will, a man-made banken, embankment, and some of it does not. I would say the abutting property owners, where it's open, responsible.
That's what Kevin had said.
Where it goes under the road through a culvert, we don't own the brook, but the culvert is ours.
I would say, I would say either the, the abutting property or the state, one or the other, because it's a waterway. And I don't know who, because it's years and years and years and years that that was been built. But it's not the town.
So, I think the question, I don't have the letter now, but I think he wanted to know who, who's responsible for it, and...
I would either send him to District 3, or District 3 can get better, give him an understanding of who's responsible for it. Either driveway?
There's, I was, I literally parked in that spot, like, a week ago. Looked at it, and I'm like, oh. It's, and by the way, it's deep.
Yeah.
Like, it's, it's that deep.
It's really deep.
Yeah.
Want me to send him a letter back saying you should talk to District 3?
Well, what do you think, Catherine?
Well, I would say it's the property owners, so like I said, except for the culverts. The culverts would be the responsibility of those municipalities that own the roads.
But it's not the culverts that it's failing.
Right, it's where it's open.
Right.
That would be the property owners
Right.
that it passes through, just like if I had a brook, that it was a boundary between my, well, I do, between myself and the abutter. If it flooded over the, the bankens, who's responsible for the property owners? Just because it has man-made banks, ooh, doesn't make it less responsible.
Right.
Okay. A last item, a resident in Belmont would like permission to take any old bikes that he finds at the transfer station. He fixes them up and donates them to homeless slash needy people.
Right from the train, the transfer station, right from our transfer station?
Yes, he had gone to Kevin, and Kevin said, you need to ask the selectman for permission, so he came in.
So how is, is Kevin gonna set them aside? Or is, are they in the metal bin?
He didn't say. I remember this came up a couple of years ago. And the answer was no back then.
Is he, is he profiting from it, or is it a nonprofit?
Well, what he says is he's donating them.
Okay. I, I don't have a problem with that, I think it's an excellent idea, because the homeless really need them right now.
So maybe the question should be, to Kevin, does he see any, does this cause any issues with him? Okay.
I agree.
I'll ask him.
I'd, I'd say yes, as long as it's not gonna complicate any of the operations at the, at the transfer station.
You know, during the hours that the transfer station is open.
Yeah.
And only if it's convenient to Kevin.
Okay. That's all I have, unless anyone has any questions for me.
The I talked to Tim, I wish, I totally forgot, the AV system in his report was severed during the whole construction thing, on the floor, so the video and everything, when I asked how long it was gonna take to get new pieces and new parts for that, the end of the month. Possibly the end of the month, it depends, because they're very busy right now with supplying schools and stuff. So he set up a webcam, I don't think webcams are as efficient or easier to see, for that matter, when people zoom in and come in on the meetings and things. So I would just as soon come here for the meeting, until we get that fixed, so that the residents have the same view as they do here, as we had over there. Just a preference for me.
And remember, you were going to have your meeting on the 21st here anyway.
Right.
Because of the Gassett meeting. So by your October meeting, you should be back at Town Hall.
Right.
That's fine with me.
Okay, so it's just the 21st meeting anyway, and then the, may, it might be the 5th if pots don't come in here, maybe. Okay. Alright, and then alright, is there any more business to come before us in a public meeting? Mr. Ruggles?
Motion to adjourn?
Yep. Might be. A motion's been made and seconded, non-debatable. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.